... respectively, that would be the same rates as last year. So, the taxpayer would pay the same amount on their city tax bill as they did last year, assuming that their property has not been reassessed. And we'll open that up to comments, to public comments, anyone here that would like to make a comment concerning the proposed tax rate for personal property and real property for fiscal year 2016, 2017.
Okay.
Anybody? Last call.
We've got someone coming in just real quick.
That's Justin Bradley's phone.
There was a John before.
I wasn't.
I'm not sure.
And the winner is?
Door number one. Justin Bradley.
There's another one.
Keith, you want to say anything about the property tax rate?
Just walked in. I don't know which of y'all set me up for this.
You'll pass right now.
Okay.
Mayor, I think you can close that public key.
All right. Let me know here at, what, at about 4:48? 4:46, public key is now closed. Let's go on to item number three, the E-911, an agreement update on the negotiations.
Let me begin.
Let you begin.
We've received notification today from Mr. Height, actually from the media also, that the fiscal court accepted our proposed agreement unanimously. As I said, on unanimous vote at their meeting this morning. And we, I guess we need to move forward.
Any comments from council members?
Yeah, I'd like to make one comment. Take in mind the John's or the mayor's personal thing out of it. I'd like an answer for what we're staying for, to be honest with you with the county. It's going to cost taxpayers roughly another $140,000 to stay with the county, or roughly $130,000. You have to take some to stay with the county for the dispatch that we have. The police and fire, this is, I want to answer why we're staying. The police and fire both felt they're unsafe and just satisfied with the current dispatch situation. And that fell on deaf ears. Dispatch and Sheriff Department both has locked the Barstown Police Department out. Barstown Police Department no longer has access to dispatch or Sheriff's Department. They're locked out. The only way to contact is, I think, through phone or fax. I still haven't heard of a plan to upgrade or fix the current dispatch problems. Our service, our radios, our reception, our dispatching procedures. Nothing on that. And like Jim says, it's a broke marriage. There's more amosky out there than you can stand. Nobody speaks to each other and it's ongoing. They filed three complaints this weekend. Now, dispatch has filed complaints against us. And you think just us passing this thing is going to stop it? Then we need a plan too. If we're going to stay together, we need a plan to stop this and reconcile these problems and try to mend what we got. If not, we're going to be back here again in January doing this all over again. But I still haven't heard why we're staying. Is it for old time's sake? You know, I can see why the dispatches, I don't blame them for voting for 100% on it. I would too if I was a master. Hell, it's golden goose. They're going to have to come up with a lot of money quickly. I can see why they voted. That's smart on their part. But I still ain't heard a good reason for us to stay unless we're going to reconcile all these problems. And if they can sit there and say, yeah, we're going to take care of this problem and put a new administrator in, it's going to be good for my police officer, my firefighters. It's going to be a good situation when we walk away and then they're not going to be fighting. And we'd say, well, we got a contract. But my police officer and firefighters are still at each other's throat out there. I'd like, what we can do to fix these problems? Or why are we staying? Are we going to spend that much taxpayer's money just to stay for old time's sake or what?
Oh, you're looking at me now.
I'm looking at anybody. I ain't looking at you.
Well, yeah, you are, but anyway.
Oh, you already are there.
First, I would like to address what I said at the last meeting. Fred brought up, you know, it's about the safety and the lives of the firemen and the policemen. And then the statement was made, it is on us if something happens. Well, if we rewind and go back, it's deja vu again because we heard this with the fire department. And when I said, you have to look at the root cause of why they're at each other's throat. Was it man-made or was it something technical? And in this cause, it's man-made. It's something that was started with the city. When we create something, then we want to piggyback and put it on someone else. But as the council, we have to sit here and we have to, it's time for us to make amends. Like I said, if you want to do something, be positive about doing it and don't be negative. Because negative and negative, what's the deal? We keep talking about what the dispatchers do not do. I mean, if I was a dispatcher, I wouldn't want to be with the city either. You guys aren't the only ones that did dispatching. You did it, what, 20 years ago? Mine's a little bit fresher, eight years ago. So, I mean, things have changed. We have to give them the chance to rectify things. We have said, okay, these are the problems. Going forward, they're going to work on those things. I don't see, you know, I'm not the one that went around calling everybody and telling them, change your vote. This is disgusting. This right here is quite embarrassing, what we're doing right now. And to say that the firefighters and the policemen, you know, you're talking about right now. Larry Green has filed now of complaints. But there weren't, those complaints were not documented back then. I don't care who was in charge. They weren't documented. So now you have this fluff of complaints. And yeah, there's firemen sitting here today and an acting chief. But those are not the ones that are coming to me and talking to me about dispatch. I'm sorry. They're not the ones that are saying, hey, it's not what they're saying it is. Yes, there are issues, but it's not what they're saying it is. I'm going to listen to them because they too are experts in the field. This is not about not liking someone. This is about doing the right thing.
Okay, does anyone have anything else?
I agree with Councilman Copeland's quote. She covered many points. And I agree with her point of the set.
Okay, Councilor, what do you?
We, our last meeting, we voted to conclude our negotiations. They approved the negotiations. And so, even though there was an attempt to circumvent our vote, which didn't look good and was really unprecedented, and I don't know who Councilman Copeland was referring to, but you did call me and ask me to reconsider my vote. And I told you I wasn't. So, we need to move forward. Enter into this interlocal agreement, where I look at it as a business arrangement. We're partners in this. We need to move forward.
I just have a question. I guess we just, do we need to make another motion to allow the mayor to enter into this negotiation? Because the last one we made was to give you the authority to make an offer, which you did.
You have an ordinance that allows the mayor to enter into an agreement with Nelson Fiscal Court. That was part of that one that we just recently amended.
Okay, so we don't need to make another?
Yeah, it also was in the motion.
Got it.
Excuse me, Councilman Lydian, you don't have it for you.
It was in the minutes, when the motion was made and the language is used by the city attorney and the motion was made by Councilman Lydian, it included an authorized mayor.
I do have a comment.
Fred, are you finished?
Yeah.
Sam, is he?
He is, sir.
Okay. There you can go.
For the record, for the city clerk, Mayor, you are disrespectful. City council vote, four to two, 9-1-16, city council special meeting decision related to 911 service. KRS statue, city council former governor, Robert rules of order. I'd like for you to post that in a minute.
I'm not quite sure what the reference was in regard to.
You want me to read it again?
Yes, sir.
Mayor John Ronty, you are disrespectful. City council vote, four to two, 9-1-16, city council special meeting decision related to 911 service. KRS statue, city council former governor, Robert rules of order.
I will listen to this first.
Anything else?
I'd like to make a comment, sure, but I'm in agreement with what's been said here that it is going to be a task to get everything back together. But we've got to all work in that direction, the county as well as the city. If we don't, this isn't going to work. We're all smart enough to know that. But I got faith that we will work together, set up the rules and the programs that we need to do, see and work together and try to get this back on track. Now, we all know that if we don't, we've got problems. We all know that. But now, we're going to have to let this thing go. Sure, we've made, there's some comments been made that hurt feelings and some comments made that hurt my feelings. But we're going to let that go and work as a team and let's get this thing on the road. It's in much head in that direction. Now, let's get the power to be together and set up the rules and address some of these complaints. Don't wait two or three weeks for a complaint. Take the complaint wherever it needs to be. And my understanding is that we're going to have some say in what goes on here. Now, sure, the gunners are hard to be and get together and make some sort of adjustment to it, whatever. And we're not going to be right all the time. They're not going to be right all the time. But let's try to work together and get the thing back on track.
Okay, you know, you voted to do the con, to sign this contract, of which I will, but let me tell you something. The complaints have never been documented, there's never been a procedure until this chief and Brad Gillik come in. Me sending a message to the magistrates, that message was, in my opinion, is no different than what Dean Watts has sent emails to each and every one of you all. So, there is no difference. There's no difference. If there's no difference, then you don't want to talk into Dean Watts or other magistrates. There's no difference. With that said, this meeting is adjourned. The special meeting, we're going to go into regular session.
Make it work. Thank you.
Work on the session.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, the, it's Bob Pien, we're at the regular working session and we'll do number eight. Ann Rosley, you want to address the city council?
Yes, sir. And I've got also a neighbor, Rick, that lives down the street. I don't know if you've got the pictures on record, John, that I brought up here a few days, a week or so ago?
Yes, Larry and I have discussed it, but you can go right now.
Okay, well, okay, well, we're here to make sure you keep on working and we want a solution to our street. It's not just pumping the excess water out of people's homes from their basements that are flooding our streets. We're also dealing with a rain and it's not the 100-year-old rain, it's a weekly rain. I've got pictures on my phone from last week that it only rained 10 minutes and we're flooded. I couldn't get to my car. The older I get, I'm not going to be able to get to my car, okay? It's time to address. I am not an engineer. I pay taxes. Our money went up this year, our valuation of our property. I want that street fixed. We need a storm sewer or something there to stop the water from being a pond in front of our house. And now that the way the blacktop is on our street, I'm in 204 West Plagee. That's where I am, down by the bakery. We all know when it rains, what happens there. And with that blacktop being two inches above the curb, we've also got, like, well, I went and got lime last week and threw it, I threw 100 pounds of lime in my, to get rid of the moss and try to get rid of the mosquitoes. Might have done too good of a job because it's, and because it dried it up and makes it look better. And Jim, that has purchased the house down on Fourth, has, I don't know what he did with this water, but it's not pumping in our street. But we still have a water issue when it rains. I would appreciate you all looking at a solution and I don't want to put it long-term. I want it done. I came 20 years ago and asked for help and was put off and it wasn't, I'm still young. It knows. I want the situation fixed, please. And you all need to come up with a solution with this water that comes out of people's homes into our gutter that stays there constantly. Rick's got a really bad problem and has had it for years. And he's got mosquitoes, he's got green moss still growing in his gutter, but he's down the street from me. I would be, you all would have already heard from me a long time ago, people said, bothering me like this. I'll guarantee you, and I may not be in the thorn in your outside, until you all please address this situation.
Ann Rosley, I know you, you've dealt with it a long time. I know when I was on the streets, we knew what was going on. When I was on the council, we did, as a council member, you can only do what you can do. But I promise you, I've sat with Larry this morning and we have a solution worked out and he's drawing it, so.
As we speak. Good, Larry.
Yeah, he's drawing it right now. But we had a, we had a good hour or so of conversation and he has a solution and we know about what's going to, what's going to cost him. And it is doable and it'll be fixed.
And we will see this?
This year.
Okay. Within six months, eight months, it'll be nice or else I will be back. Now, I plan on coming to every meeting and being a thorn in your outside. I'll fetch you some slack if you really promise me you're going to work on it.
Well, I think I always do what I say.
Okay, thank you. And this is Rick.
Can I say a few words?
Sure. Where do you live at, please? What's your name?
My name's Rick Schrock, I live in 212 West Plagee. And there's a house between Ann Rosley's and myself, I think it's 208, that has, it is constantly pumping water into the street. And it's not just when it rains, it's all the time. And I think we have a serious mosquito issue on our 100 dollar block. And I don't know if the rest of ours sounds like that, but we've had it for quite some time. And right before I came over here, I took a video, it was pumping water into the street this afternoon and it hasn't rained in at least five days to a week. And it could not rain for two weeks and they still pump water. It was several times a day and so I'm hoping that whatever solution can help take care of that problem. It's the, on the other side of the alley for me and it is pretty much constant.
Well, it is illegal to pump that rainwater into your sewer line. And I think it's kind of a precedent from earlier. It's not set up by ordinance, it has to be pumped to the curb or into the yard.
It can be pumped into the sanitary sewer.
Yeah, it cannot. And so therefore, it kind of leaves only one area to pump it and is into the gutter drain of the street. And that's kind of what it's been since. And it goes back to this, that's the way it's always been done. But I'm not saying it's always right. But with that being said, you know, I think what we're looking at may fix some of these issues.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Bill.
I've got a question. I went up there and looked at both things and I was up there when it was raining. And it was flowing pretty heavy out there and you could see the pumping out of the house over there and I just, I didn't realize you could pump into the street like that in the house. There's got to be a better solution than all these people pumping this water into the streets. There's got to be a gravel water trap or something that they can put on their property to run that water back into the, into the water table. I know it's illegal to send it into the sewer system, but it can't be that costly to run a drainage into a gravel trap or something on that order in your own property, to keep it on your own property and not disturb everybody else in our streets.
Well, I don't think you can stop them from pumping water out of the yard. But if the groundwater is up to the first floor, they've got problems. And so, what happens, the alley house, I think that you're referring to, they have a sump pump and it runs, and the air conditioner comes and it runs all year long and it comes down Fifth Street. It lays in that gutter. That's been, well, two of the people I've talked to about it since died. It's got a little age on it. So, the solution would be around a storm drain and say a 15-inch pipe from the alley behind Medicaid toward West Plagee, put a couple of boxes there. Then come up to Hayors and put a couple of boxes around that street corner. And then head on up toward the alley by David Hall's old place, maybe, and put another one there. Then people could, if they have water problems or up to here, could pipe by ground to the storm drain that if they have a chronic drip. So, part of the problem is that you have freezing, like it freezes over in winter and it's just, very few streets do we have just chronic water flow like this. So, the good news is that when we bid the streets, we, the bid was lower than last year and we've got some money. If you all would have us draw it, we could come back to you with a plan. And if you further would let us do ourselves with our own crews, that'll save some money. And then, I guess you could just keep drawing. I don't know where, you know, it'd be nice to have it all over town, but just this project, you might even come back down to Fifth, which I had been thinking, to try to get that end or come up from, it actually goes down Fifth through that drain, the alley gutter at Fifth and Plagee. Then goes down to the alley by the counterbrakers, I think, you know, and it drops in a box there. And it goes to that place of origin that we're talking, the drop box at behind Medicaid in the cross of that alley. That's, that's the storm drain we have currently that we would hook to. And we are limited in how deep we can go because it's shallow and there's not a lot of grade difference. But really, however, if you authorize it or if you want us to, we'll get some shots, we'll draw up a design and it would offer people a remedy that would get this water out of gutter.
And we're going to save money by allowing our crews, our crews can do that. He doesn't say he can do that, he can master that. And it's going to save quite a bit of money. So, if we do the working house, I, you know, I don't have a problem.
You need a motion or something?
No, no, I want it, I want them to, I want them to draw it up, get the, get the plan done, have an estimate of what it's going to cost of materials. Because I don't want nobody to be operating blindly. Be transparent. So, we're going to see what the cost is. And then, when, once that happens, then we can turn around and I'll bring it to you. It's probably going to be, what'd you say, $50,000 to $100,000 project, maybe?
Yes.
Something like that?
Yes.
We would really appreciate it.
So, that's what we'll do. But I got to bring it and then I'll bring it back in front of you. When I get everything in order, I will bring it back to you. And then you can, you can look at it and you can play with it and you can cut on it if you want. And we can give you back.
And one other remark I want to give you. That street cleaner, with that blacktop in this much, it's not doing anything, so put it somewhere else where it won't be wasting our money going down our, it can clean the thing. That street cleaner cleans because it's, the gutter is lower than the blacktop and all it's doing is, it's not even blowing the dirt, it's not even doing anything. It's just still sitting there and I just hate to see you all spend extra, whatever you're paying somebody, an extra hour to be doing our street when it's not doing anything. So, I'm going to throw that in there.
When we fix this, then that might be.
Thank you. Thank you all very much, all of you for listening. We appreciate it. And I'll be back in six months if I don't see anything happening. That's a promise.
I'll be in your house.
Okay.
In 30 days.
Okay, thank you. Thank you all. Have a nice evening.
Thank you, Ann Rosley. Yes, sir.
The problem is that we all know that that's been a problem for all of that. And not only is it a problem now, it's one of the big concerns, and I've talked to a person up there, others know it. Their concern was with winter time, it's freezing over there, that they have had some accidents over there. So, you know, it's something we really do need to study and look at.
It's not been a problem just for the last couple of years. It's been a problem for the last year, 20 years. So, we'll work on that. I just go to be the city council travel policy. Fred?
Yeah, I asked that a bit on the agenda. We talked about this some months ago when the fiscal passed the budget, we put some money in the budget for training and then we had discussion about how are we going to spend that money? And we talked about having a policy to cover that, which I guess we need to do. And Barbie, at the time, gave us some, maybe me, I don't know, a whole stack of similar policies from different places and, you know, they all have their twos and their fours. And I got to thinking about that and I really think we just need to keep this really, really simple because we have $1,000 in there apiece, if you will, for training. And I just, I wrote some, a simple couple paragraphs. If everybody's okay with that, I can develop this into a municipal order, I guess, having to do that. Essentially, I got to start with this. You know, usually an expense, a expense report is approved by somebody when you're working, your boss approves it. And I really don't see that as being applicable here because who's going to approve it? I mean, we're, we're city council, we've been elected. So, I simply have that each councilman is allotted an annual amount for travel and training. Funds may be utilized at each council with discretion for tuition, for seminars, conferences, KLC classes in academies and any other training or trips that prepare him or her to better serve. These funds may also be used for car rental, mileage reimbursement, plane travel, parking, tolls, et cetera, for travel purposes to attend to its training. Expense report detailing all costs will be submitted to the chief financial officer for reimbursement. In order to provide information to the citizens regarding these expenditures, the expense reports will be published as part of the next council meeting minutes. That keeps it simple. You want to go someplace, you think you need some training, you know better than anybody what training you need. You go to KLC conference, you go to something, you go get trained, you turn in your expense report, trace your write your check, we publish the, the, the. report, Tracy writes your check, we publish the, the expense report in the meetings minutes, which keeps everybody honest, it keeps, you don't have to worry about the public, we're spending the public's money, we're all giving the public's money to ourselves to spend. It's simple, we don't really discuss it, we don't have any, it just goes in the minutes, it's all over public record, people can see it. It keeps things simple. You want training, go get trained. That, that's, to me, that's, that's simple. If everybody's okay with that, we can work that into an actual municipal order for everybody and we can kind of tweak it if there's any added work here or there. It's just, it, to me, that's the way to do it, so. I think we need a policy, we do need something because it's covered, so this would cover that.
I have one question. Is the funds not transferable? Everybody uses their own, if you decide not to use taxpayer money, you don't have to.
That's the way I, that's the way I, we could, we could put that in there.
I would. Use your own, if you don't use it, that's fine, you can't use nobody else.
I think that was part of the budget discussion.
Yes, as part of the discussion, yeah, that's more of a budgeting thing, I think, but.
But it would go there.
Yeah, that, yeah, that was in the budget discussion.
Because I think we said per council person.
Yes.
So that would imply that you couldn't give it to somebody else.
Yeah. So that's, that's, I'll do that and I'll meet with Barbie.
Well, I have a question. When you speak in reference to the, you said Kentucky League of City Conference, the conference, I mean, there's two of them or one of them and normally the city pays for that, right? Doesn't the city pay for the Kentucky League of Cities Conference?
We could check that out.
Well, since you, since you're, well, I just wanna make sure because we don't want you to write up anything that would be debatable later on. So in reference to Kentucky League of Cities, you know, those are paid by the ci, by the city of Bardstown.
Your class, your classes, I think, are paid by the city.
And the conference. And the conference.
The yearly conference.
Yes.
Yes.
And, and the trainings are paid by the city of Bardstown.
So what, what, so you and?
I mean, because if, if that's, if, if we're writing up something, we all know that, I, I hate to write up something because there's a new council coming. If, if you was gonna say you was running and, you know, things of that nature, that, that would be pertinent for you to have that, but you know, we have, I mean, there, there's seats that people aren't running, seats there are, and for us to make something like that, um...
Are you saying, are you saying we shouldn't do a municipal order at all? We shouldn't address?
Well, I, I do, but it's, you know, the wording in it, the Kentucky League of Cities and things of that nature, you're making decisions that, you know, they would definitely probably go back and look at it.
Well, here's what I would suggest. I'll write this up, I'll send it to, rather than send it to everyone, I'll send it to you.
Please.
You draw it up, send it to everyone and then we can all mark it up. That's, it'll give us something to start.
Thank you.
Good start, you know, Rick.
All right. We've got something to do. I'm done.
Okay. Where you going?
Yeah.
Yeah, we're gonna do the amendments to the alcohol beverage ordinance.
Right. This is going to be presented at the September 13th for a first read. It's, as I explained, when Senate Bill 11 came out, there were several changes that were gonna have to be addressed for the city of Bardstown. A couple of them are definitions and I've included those with bold and underlined. But then in regard to an NQ3, it's now available to bed and breakfast and distillers, so I've included that in the definition for NQ3 retail drink license. And then there's been a new name for the special temporary alcoholic beverage auction license. So again, that's being added in definitions, so there won't be any change in regard to how that's addressed. The other areas that we have to pay attention to are the new batch renewals and the annual renewals. A batch renewal is for a type of business that has more than one of itself, like New Moil, has several, not only in Bardstown, but all throughout the state of Kentucky. So they get the opportunity to do a batch renewal on the same date within the state and that's for the August 31st date. So there, I think I have about nine batch renewals throughout like Circle K and the Rings and Wings and Walmart and of course Kroger and Walgreens. So I have to address that and when those renewals occur annually. And now we're going to go to the state date for renewals, which is the 1st of May. Everything has to be renewed by the 1st of May. So instead of it being June the 1st for us, or excuse me, July the 1st for us, we now have to saddle up with the April 30th date. So that's addressed as well. Now, I've got two new licenses that are available for cities that I'm hoping that you will allow to have us issue a license for as well. And I've highlighted those underneath the name of the license and the cost for that license. And the newest one is a bottling house or bottling house storage. I've got four new licenses this year for bottling house storage, for which we, we did not get a liquor license amount for because we don't have a liquor license on the books. But it's now available for cities to collect a cost. I've listed that and I've listed it at the same cost as pretty much the wholesalers and I've tried to keep it at a reasonable cost. And then the other one is a microbrewery. Remember Planning Zoning issued, a lot of zoning changes in regard to microbreweries. It's now a license that is available to cities and so I'd like to list that as well under malt beverage so that if by any chance something comes down the road anytime soon, there will be a license available on the city side.
And again, Barb, these are all changes that came out in the last legislative session.
Mm-hmm. And I brought the Senate Bill 11 with me in case anybody wants to, this is it. Front and back. Yes, so those are all the changes that came about from Senate Bill 11. And it's, these are the only places that it, amendments are necessary within the liquor license, because we've already addressed the open on days that people vote.
So they couldn't, they couldn't have batch renewals before they ought to do an individual?
Well, the cities have the choice of, of picking a date for anything. And ours was, we renewed by July 1st, just like a fiscal year.
But, but this batch, like New Moil.
Uh-huh.
So they couldn't do that before?
Yes, on the state side. But now we're regulated to follow state renewals. So now we have two separate renewal dates that we have to keep track of.
So you wanna do one?
And I can't do one, I have to do two. I have to do batch renewals on the, by the August 31st date and I have to do regular renewals for anyone else with just one license. It's gonna be funny.
If you read this, it'll drive you to death.
But it's necessary, we're, we're required as of July the 15th. We have one year to get all this on track. I have to have it, anything that's issued after January 1st has to be on this new renewal cycle, schedule. So again, that'll be addressed at the council meeting on the 13th for first reads.
Also under the mayor's report, Justin, would you like to say a few things?
Yeah, no problem. I just wanted to invite the council, I know the chiefs sent out the invitation again for the truck dedication ceremony, just reminding the council about that. That's on Saturday, 11 o'clock. We'll be dedicating the new ladder truck that was purchased. Ceremony's gonna take right around an hour probably, have some light, light refreshments and stuff, but you can come by, look at the truck, ask us questions about it, we're still learning on it every day, but it is a phenomenal piece of equipment that, that's gonna be put to very good use for the city and its residents. So you all rest assured that you all made the, made the right decision. I know that it was a tough decision, it's a lot of money, but it was a very good investment. It's an investment that's gonna last the city for quite some time.
And I would like to see every council member climb that 100-foot.
Hang on that one.
It's a day.
It's, yeah, I, I was at the top of it and it's, it's amazing.
Yeah. It's a phenomenal piece of equipment.
Same page on.
But again, that's Saturday, Saturday at 11 o'clock, we'll be doing a formal, it's called a housing ceremony and a washdown ceremony, so it's something that I've never been a part of in my 11 years here. I don't think that Trevor's ever been a part of it, he's been a little longer than I have, but it's, it's gonna be something to see, so.
It'll be Saturday, September 10th, right?
Yes, sir, September 10th, 11 o'clock.
It's amazing that, it's amazing that truck compared to the other trucks, when they go up the hill, you see all the firemen jump out of the truck and push your trucks up the hill and that, and the dude just runs off and leaves it. It's just amazing, so. It's, it was, it was well worth the money regardless of what you meant, something I think, but it's, it was a good investment.
I got an announcement, the State Committee scheduled for Thursday, September 8th has been canceled.
September 8th?
September 8th through Thursday, we have a safety note that's been canceled.
All right. You can ask anyone? No?
Yes.
Larry?
If y'all remember, we asked to present to you all a bid from the Ballard family, they're running a water line from 245 over to Philatral Lane. We asked to get a price for the upgrade from 8 to 12. They've done that and I'm waiting on the gentleman to give us the price, I hope to have it for the next meeting. It's gonna be in the $30,000 range, I think. So the 1900 figure of upgraded water line, so I'll have you all those numbers for the next meeting, I hope.
Councilman Coven?
Yes. I would like to, I'm standing alone on this, no one coerced me to do this. I, I would like to apologize to the county. Two emails went out. One that we personally, I did not know about, but the first one, Matthew Height, our county attorney, I want to apologize to you. In no way or manner did you ask me or coerce me to do a bid. I, I was, I was dismayed by that because as a public official and a councilwoman, to sit in front of her council and state that a bid was placed between you and I, I just thought that was, I thought saying that, reading that was unethical and a lack of professionalism. I've known you to have the utmost integrity. I've known you since high school and you have not changed. So to you, I, I have to apologize and I thought this was the correct forum to do it. And like I said, I stand alone when I do this because I didn't ask anyone to back me on this. But as you know, I, I, I'll say what is right and I'll do what is right. And to me, there's no opinion about it because it was, it was just wrong. And the second email that went out to the magistrates and Keith, you're the only one here, I think, at the moment, I, I want to apologize to you guys as well. A 4-2 vote was taken and I, I can't understand why someone would go around the council and send you a letter like that. It was stated that Judge Watts has sent us correspondence, that is true, he has, but it has always been in support of his magistrates, not against his counsel. So I, I just want to apologize to you for that. And when, sometimes you speak the truth, it hurts. And when I say lack of professionalism, it's displayed at every meeting that we have. I may be the only one that questioned that. I don't know why no one else questions it, but it's quite embarrassing and our community deserves better. We look forward to working with you. We look forward to making a marriage work. That's what it's about. And so I appreciate you and I appreciate your understanding in times like these. So with that said, I'm, I'm done, but thank you so much.
Thank you. Certainly, I don't think it was necessary, I knew it. No apology needed here. I kinda feel like I represent all of Nelson County, not just the city of Bardstown. I come into Bardstown a whole lot and I represent them all. And I want them to know that they're safe and whatever, you know, we could go on and on and on, you could have a fire truck on every city block, you could have a police officer on every city block, but it costs money. And you know, at the same token, I've got children in this world, in Nelson County, I want them to be able to live a little bit too, you know? I understand that some feel like the need is this and that and I understand, if it was a major issue and I got 1,000 phone calls a week on it, I classify, if I got five phone calls a week, I classify that as an issue, but I haven't received it. So thank you, no apology needed here from, from the county.
Any other apologies out there?
I, I said one to him, if I, if I was disruptive in any respect during my last meeting, I certainly offered my apologies to the council. I thought it was not my intention, I'm just trying to, trying to get as many facts before you that help you make the right decision, so. If I was, my apologies back.
Jen, can we go in and get in?
Thanks for bringing it out.